Twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen Planning Board meeting is brought to you by Area 58 Access Media. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda tonight is a sign permit. It's for a drop zone, Route 58 and South Meadow Road. If there's anybody here for that tonight. Do you have anything to talk to us about that, Stephen?
Mr. Chair, this came in on Friday. Staff hasn't had a chance to review this. Nonetheless, at first pass, it doesn't seem to be fully compliant with the town zoning bylaws. The size seems to be too large. There's also more information on that. They probably should be allowed. It's up to the board if they want to deny this, but I would recommend continuing this till the next meeting so that staff has a chance to work with the applicant and make them compliant.
Yes, I think that's what we normally do or try to do here. If that's all right with everyone, we'll continue this and see. When is our next meeting going to be?
November thirteenth.
Okay, so the sixth was...okay, that'd be the thirteenth. That's right.
Make a motion to move the sign permit for drop zone to November thirteenth at...
Seven o'clock.
I'll second.
So you have a motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the next, we have several public hearings. The first is on the application of Preolo Plymouth Street Realty Trust requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two thirty, thirty-nine hundred, fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at zero Plymouth Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map's eighteen-lot eight to allow a thirty-two unit townhouse development in a residential agricultural area. Do you have anything to tell us about this, Stephen?
I do, Mr. Chair. The applicant was asked to revise, I believe it was the stormwater calculations, and the applicant emailed me this morning to ask that we continue this to the next meeting on November thirteenth at seven o'clock so that they can complete their assignment.
All right, entertain a motion for a continuance.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Preoli Plymouth Street Realty Trust to November thirteenth at seven o'clock.
I will second again.
So you have a motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next is the application of David Mulcahy, nineteen-twenty-nine Development LLC of Kingston, requesting a site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two thirty and thirty-one hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at one fifty-seven North Main Street on Assessors Map twenty-four-lot four A in Carver. And the applicant requests approval to construct an addition of a Craftsman-Tradesman building to an existing single-family dwelling in the high commercial zone. And what do we have going with this tonight, Stephen?
Mr. Chair, this is a continuance, and we did conduct a site visit on October eighteenth at five o'clock. Thank you very much to the applicant and his representatives for being there. Very informative. It was that evening that Kevin gave us the revised stormwater calculations. The numbers that were given to us previously were lower than the Board of Health standards, and so we just received those on Thursday. Our peer review team at Fussin' O'Neill has not completed their review, and so it should probably be continued to our next meeting on eleven-thirteen when we have the determination from the peer review that the stormwater review measurements are adequate.
So is it...I think we plan on continuing this till our next meeting?
If for no other reason than there isn't four people on the board.
Yeah, well, we do have four without alternate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Yes. But we'd like a full board, so that's fine.
Sure, okay. Well, thank you for that. Okay, so entertain a motion to continue this public hearing for David Mulcahy to November thirteenth at seven o'clock.
Go on, Jim.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of David Mulcahy to November thirteenth at seven.
Second again.
So you have a motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. On the third is on the application of Renewable Energy Development Partner LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections thirty-one hundred, thirty-five eighty, and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw. This is located at thirteen A Gate Street and zero Godfrey Circle in Carver, Mass. Assessors maps one-l-r and one-zero-r to allow a large-scale ground-mounted dual-use solar power generating project in a residential agricultural district.
Well done, Mr. Chair. That was a mouthful, and you did it. The staff in the planning board convened on-site on October sixteenth at 5:00 p.m. with Tom...Tom, remind me your last name?
Melahan.
Tom Melahan. And beyond the boards marveling in the beauty of the site and the day, I believe that some of what you guys discussed that day seemed to be favorable to the project's proposal. So with that, I'll turn it over to you to make the determination.
Okay, so we haven't got the package yet of what we need to see that...I know the last meeting we were talking about it.
The hundred-and-twenty-five percent for the...to remove the project after twenty years.
The decommissioning bond has to be discussed and decided on? Yes. We have...sorry, friends, I'm going to make sure I speak into that microphone now. We did receive the technical review committee memos as well as the peer review from Fussin' O'Neill. As it were, there are no issues or complaints that were shared with us that needed further response from the applicant.
Okay. So the fire department has approved this, access to this project?
As I'm recalling, Mr. Chair, yes. And forgive my lack of preparation at this moment, but yes, my recollection was that they were compliant with the fire department's wishes.
And I believe there was a berm that was on the plans here. If we could just step up and...I know I didn't make the site visit, but the other members of the board that did go on the site visit, and I think it was discussed at the blast meeting, that perhaps the berm wasn't needed along the side of the road. I don't know how...if the other members of the board could talk about that, how they felt about that.
About the berm?
Yeah.
I think per the bylaw on how it looked, it's probably not necessary.
How did you feel, Jim?
You know, I think I agree as well that the berm wasn't necessary.
Yeah, when we stood back and we looked at the site where you would stand, there was...it really...it didn't affect anyone's home. There was a good line of trees and...
That's a perfect place to put a project.
Unless they were on his property.
We're happy to not do it if the board doesn't require it. We proposed it to be conservative.
Right, I understand. So I guess we're happy with this project. I'd just like to see a list of conditions. Do we have the decommissioning paperwork and...
Did you guys prepare the decommissioning?
We...in our original application, we had submitted a decommissioning estimate.
Okay, okay.
And at the last hearing, we discussed that the board would likely require the bond to be a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of our estimate. So we said we were amenable to that as a condition.
Okay.
And then the only other issue, just if I may, that the...we...your engineers submitted a memo of review comments. We submitted a response yesterday. I saw an email just on the way down here from the engineer saying that our response was adequate, and just he reminded me and Mr. Cole that the board should impose as a condition of approval the requirement to submit test pit results prior to submission of our building permit applications. We had proposed to do it during...after construction or as a kind of a confirmation process, but instead the engineer wanted to see them before we built, and we're fine with that as well.
Mr. Chair, if I may, to add to what Hank just shared, I'm reading from the email from Sean Martin from Fussin' O'Neill that was sent at 5:53 this afternoon. Probably why I didn't see it. The revised documents adequately address our comments. Note that the test pit requirement must be included as a condition for approval.
So I guess we could...is there any questions, comments by any of the board members here?
Well, I know one point of concern that Will had brought up at the site visit was fencing. And I know that there was some question as to what was required via various codes. He was discussing building, and then I think you guys were talking NEC. I know that he felt pretty strongly about furthering that discussion, so I don't know if any new information was brought. That's not my area of expertise.
Right, I'm happy to adjust that, ma'am. So we have not proposed a fence. I would first point out that it's our understanding that it's not a requirement of the town's bylaw, so from a bylaw perspective, I think we're in good shape to have our no fence proposal accepted. With respect to other, you know, safety concerns or non-bylaw concerns, typically it would...the issue that drives a fence around ground-mounted solar facilities in general is the accessibility of the wiring of a ground-mounted solar project. And the way the National Electric Code reads, which would be something that your building official would enforce, is that that wiring can't be readily accessible. And readily accessible is a defined term in the National Electric Code, and it speaks to whether someone can get at that wiring without a ladder or without having to remove a panel or an enclosure. And if the wiring is readily accessible, then some sort of deterrent must be installed to prevent that, like a fence or some grating. In our case, our project is elevated, much higher than a typical ground mount where the lower...the lowest point of the panels will be eight feet in the air, and the balance of it will be anywhere all the way up to fifteen feet. So the wiring that's associated with the array doesn't meet the definition of readily accessible in the National Electric Code. Therefore, it doesn't require any protective devices to be installed around it. In order to access the wiring, you'd have to get on a ladder and climb up there and touch the wires. So our engineer has advised us that a fence won't be required to be compliant with the National Electric Code. I suppose this is probably a more relevant discussion with the building inspector when we do submit building permits, and if he decides that our interpretation of the code is incorrect, or if we come to some dispute about that, our resort would be to fence it as required. And whether that's an issue for you folks, I don't think it would change any of the impacts of the project to have a fence around our project if required by the building official.
I think we would prefer not to have the fence primarily for access purposes for farming.
Right, that's...as I said at the last meeting, the reason we haven't proposed it is because from our proposed agricultural use, the fence would be a nuisance to us.
Do you guys think Will would be...I know that that was his main concern, and he's not here, so do you think he would be okay with that? I don't know.
Well, the way I feel about fences is I know some of the planning board members have thought that they should...they thought that the planning board should want a fence around a field to protect the panels. But I think that's up to the owners of the property and the owners of the people that own the panels. The only reason I would want a fence would be to protect the public, and if there is no danger to the public, then I don't really see...then from my standpoint, then I wouldn't want...me personally wouldn't want a fence. You know, I don't really need a fence around the project, so...I don't know how other members of the board feel, but it isn't in our bylaw...
Sure.
...to have a fence. You know, if you feel that fences are needed around these things, maybe we'd have to revisit that and take a look at the bylaw to add that, but I don't...I personally don't think that in this particular case, fence is needed, if there's no danger to the public.
Well, and I think that was Will's point, was when we were there, people were out walking and walking their dogs and on the property. I was bringing it up because that was something that he was focused on at the site visit. So since he's not here, I just wanted to address his concern.
Yeah, yeah.
I think more of what Will brought up was to the applicant that it is accessible because like Jen said, we saw our family walking with their dog, and then we've seen other projects that panels have been broken, and that's what was more of a safety thing for your end as well.
Sure.
So that's why we wanted to throw it out there at the visit about that.
Sure, and we're going to work with the landowner to do our best to kind of mitigate that by signage and, you know, the typical kind of operational measures. We're project owners ourselves, so we've dealt with that issue before.
And we were worried about the family that was going out with the dog. At night, the kids that'll find that area.
Yeah, rocks...those projects unfortunately are rock magnets. Right.
Yes, I think that was more of what Will had mentioned, too, was just trying to bring it up as a safety feature for yourself to save on the panels as well.
Appreciate it.
And if I recall, that's what he was talking about where the power came in. He was worried about like the transmission box, but if you say it's that high up, it's going to be work for anyone to tamper with it.
Absolutely, and to be clear, the stuff that's on the ground will be in locked cabinets. So it's...the only issue typically with a solar project about this whole accessibility is the actual panels themselves because the wiring is behind them, and you could walk right up and touch the wire. But in our project, you won't be able to do that. Everything that is accessible from the ground will be in cabinets locked or fenced as required.
And then the only other question I had, again, I raised it there, and I don't think it's our jurisdiction, but I had asked if for the clearing, you would need to get an earth removal permit, and I know it falls on that committee, but you had said if you're using the sand on-site, you didn't need one, so when you cleared, that sand was going to be used on-site. Do you know...are they going to require a permit or because it's being used on-site?
No, we don't...the landowner doesn't need a gravel removal permit to take sand from one location on his lot and to another location on his lot to use it on the box.
Okay.
It's not required.
Awesome.
It happens kind of every day around here.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. Great, thanks. Where he go?
All right, so if the board is satisfied, this is still open to the public. Does anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns? Seeing none, seeing no one stepping up, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Need a motion.
Okay. Do I have to say the whole thing? I make a motion to close the public hearing on the solar project. Do I have to read the whole thing?
No, no.
Jim, go for it. I haven't made this...I just second.
You know, on the application, the Renewable Energy Development Partner LLC, thirteen A Gate Street and zero Godfrey Circle.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the application of Renewable Energy Development Partner LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections thirty-one hundred, thirty-five eighty, and fifty-three hundred at thirteen A Gate Street and Godfrey Circle for a large-scale ground-mounted dual-use solar power generating project. Is that good?
That's above and beyond.
All right.
All right. So we have a motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, I think we need...I think we need all four of us to vote on this because we have two members absent on this, but I'll entertain a motion to approve the project.
The decommission report that's in our packet, that's not the updated one? Is that correct?
I don't know.
This one's dated September seventh, so that would be the updated one, correct?
We didn't...just to be clear, we didn't update it. We just...we assumed that the board would require one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent of the amount that we originally estimated.
Okay, so this is the one...this is the one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent?
No, no, this is the...this is our hundred percent.
Okay. So we just have to have that as a...
You could just simply write it as one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent of the amount presented in the application.
Okay. We'll have to tell Stephen, he's out right now, but all right, and we have to...I wanted to talk to Stephen about this. We did usually...before Stephen came and with our last planner, we would go over the list of conditions. Let's talk to Steve. Just to let you...
Yes, sir.
Just to let you know, we did close the public hearing on this particular development. We were going to approve...I just wanted to discuss something with our last planner. We actually had...we would go through something like this, and then at our next meeting, we would go through...she would write up the conditions, and then I would read the conditions and just to make sure that everybody approved of it. I mean, right now, we could look at it over in the internet and see it, but I don't know if we want to continue that. So that would put this off to the next meeting so that you could write up the conditions so we could see the, you know, everything that's associated with this project to make sure that it was right. And then we could sign it at that next meeting.
I think that'd be a fine idea.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we did, and I kind of liked that because that way there, you know, everybody, when we read it, we just read each condition, and everybody here, you know, understood what was going on. If, you know, people wanted to come to the meeting and they could, you know, actually hear it, and then, you know, then when this program aired on TV, people would actually know the conditions that we issued for this particular project. I thought that was a good idea for us to do it that way. So if we could come up with the conditions, we could sign it at the next meeting. Is that...would that be all right with you?
We're amenable to whatever your...
Okay. I didn't know how big of a rush. If we just put this off, it would just be a few minutes at the next meeting just to read the conditions, we could sign it, and then it'd be all right.
And then you would vote on it then at the next meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so you would propose the conditions to be attached to the approval and then get a vote from the board on it.
Yes, yeah.
Works for us.
Have you heard from the state? You had said any day now at the site visit. Have you heard?
Still any day now.
Oh.
The only...I mean, what I would say, ma'am, is that, I mean, we have...what we've proposed is what we have proposed to the state. So if we get bad news from the state, then I suspect you'll see us back here after we go back and figure out what we can do to salvage the project. But at this point, we're in parallel.
All right. We...so we'll just continue this...entertain a motion to continue this hearing to our next meeting, which would be the thirteenth at seven o'clock, so if somebody could...
Is it the public hearing? Because I just closed that thing.
No, it wouldn't be the public hearing. It just...well, it would be, yeah, just to continue the hearing so we could look over the conditions, and then we could sign it.
So I'm clear, but the public hearing is closed, so you won't entertain further comment?
We won't have any further comments, no.
Okay.
That's the way we had done it before, so...so we'll continue the hearing for...let me see, so this is...I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing for Borrego Solar Systems.
Close the public hearing.
Number three.
Yeah, so it's three. So this is the one on Gate Street. This is an application for Renewable Energy Development Partner LLC. We'll continue this hearing to November thirteenth at seven o'clock. So if I could have a motion, please.
We just close the hearing, right?
To the public.
Okay.
To the public, yeah.
So we close the public hearing?
Yeah.
We're just going to continue our discussion...
Yeah.
Till the thirteenth?
Right.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion on that if it's...the public hearing is closed, but we're not going to vote on this till the next meeting?
Mr. Chair, I'm flummoxed, frankly. I don't know.
What if we do to continue the discussion? Didn't we do that with the first one? I feel like we've done that before, vote to continue the discussion on something to the next meeting.
Um, see, we have...see, we have done this before. We'll be close to public hearing, but we continue the hearing for the approval till the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, do we have to continue it at all?
Or the other thing is, I guess we could...we could vote to approve this, and we'll just...on this particular one, we'll just review the conditions and then just sign it, as we normally do.
We can instruct Stephen that the following conditions have to be met.
Yeah, later on, for other projects...
Before we sign it.
I mean, if everybody's agreeable to that...
That's typically how we've done it, right. So typically, we take the vote with conditions, and then we close the hearing, and then I prepare the decision for you to sign piecemeal. Typically, it works piecemeal. As you're available, you come in, and then as soon as I have all of the signatures, I surrender that to the town clerk, and that begins the twenty-one-day appeal process.
So we don't have to continue it. We can vote on it tonight with the conditions that we lay out right now.
Okay, if you want to do it that way. But I mean, we don't have a list of conditions either. Well, we didn't have a lot of conditions. The only condition we had was for the...
The test pits was recommended by Fussin' O'Neill. We have the decommissioning bond, of course.
Okay.
And frankly, this project is fairly straightforward insofar as it meets the setbacks and the screening requirements. It's probably the least controversial solar project we've seen.
Okay.
The difference, though, of course, being that it's a dual use agriculture.
Right, right. No, that's fine, okay. So we just have actually two conditions then. It was for test pits and for...
Decommission report.
Decommissioning bond.
Decommissioning bond, okay.
Unless there's anything else the board would like to add as a condition?
No, I don't...yeah, this was a fairly simple project. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve with those two conditions.
Make a motion to approve the application of Renewable Energy Development Partner LLC request with the following conditions. Pit test and the decommission report will be changed to one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent.
All right, I'll second.
And Kara will vote on this for the fourth member, okay?
That's correct.
So those four say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and that was unanimous. Okay, so it was approved tonight.
Thank you very much.
We'll just look over the conditions when we sign it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so now we have the application of Borrego.
Well, here's this part.
Okay, we have for our next...on the list is a public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen at seven p.m. in the Carver Town Hall, meeting room one, on the application of Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections thirty-one hundred, thirty-five eighty, and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw located at seventy-two Center Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map seventy-one-five to allow a ground-mounted solar power generating facility of approximately four-hundred-ninety-nine kilowatts in a residential agricultural district. Any person who's interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair. Carver Reporter, public dates, October fifth and October twelfth of two thousand and eighteen. So, good evening.
Good evening. My name... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, if you could give us your names.
Sure. My name's Josh Farkas. I represent Borrego Solar and the landowner, Mr. and Mrs. Silva, and with me tonight is Brandon Smith. Brandon's on our civil engineering team, I'm on the development team, and we're the two that have been working on this project and preparing the plans and the responses to anything you've seen to date. So just an introduction to the project. This project is located on one of six cranberry bogs that are on the property. The bog that we're focusing on has been identified as an upland bog. Several of the others are wetland bogs. This project has been in development stages around town for the better part of three years, if not maybe a little bit longer. We've appeared in front of Conservation Commission for this project on a wetland bog in the past. We recently received our approval on this bog, the upland bog, just a few weeks ago. Five of the remaining bogs are going to continue in agricultural use. This one bog where we're proposing this project will be pulled from agricultural use, and it will be strictly a solar project at that point. There'll be no more farming underneath it once the project is installed. And just kind of a status of the overall project, we've received our interconnection services agreement with the utility company with Eversource, and we are... From the utility side, we're ready to interconnect the project as soon as approval from this board is hopefully received. So the development is very mature on this project. It will be installed with the approval of this board. We've conducted some site visits already with Mr. Cole, the town planner, you know, probably six or eight weeks ago prior to Conservation Commission. Believe we ended up there a second time together, and we've been working through the technical review committee along with the peer reviewer from Fussin' O'Neill, I believe it is. So we've basically presented updated plans this evening that have addressed all the requests in the peer review letter. We've handed out a copy, just circulated it with the updates that we've made to that. So the plan, in our opinion, and we know it needs to be reviewed by the peer reviewer again, should satisfy those requests. The meeting we had with the technical review committee was rather brief with no major requests at that point, so we basically focused on the peer review comments, took care of those. The project itself... Did you have something?
If I may, actually, I have updated responses.
Got it, okay, we'll hand that out now. And just to kind of walk everybody through a snapshot of how the project's actually laid out, the point of interconnection is in the southeast corner of the parcel, right off of Old Center Street, just before where it intersects with Center Street itself. From the existing utility pole, there'll be four or five new poles installed that are on Mr. Silva's property. They'll actually not be on the access road. The way it's set up down here, there's a tree line that has quite a bit of topography. Underneath that, the new pole... The new proposed poles will be there, and they'll be very well hidden from the actual access on Old Center and off of Center Street itself. From there, the project... The power runs underground through trenching along the bog roads, and it comes to the southwest corner of the project itself to a fenced-in equipment area where the transformers and inverters will be located. That area is fully fenced in. And then from there, as I said, it's just located in one bog. It's a 499-kilowatt AC project and 600-kilowatts DC. And basically, that entire bog will be filled with solar, all the way from the bog edges to the ditch that surrounds it, up to the dike road. If you're... When this project is installed and you're looking at it, the lower or leading edge of the panels will be right at level with the road that you'll be standing on, on the dike road, and the top of it will be right around six, six and a half feet tall, so pretty much at eye level. And we've set that so that if there is any flooding or overflow in that bog, it won't... It'll spill out onto the road before it touches the lowest part of the panels. The construction timeline, once this project is started on, is going to be relatively quick. There's no grading being proposed. You're using the existing conditions, and that we expect that to take between two and four months, depending on the time of year that we start constructing. If it's cold, it might take closer to four months. If it's warmer weather, as we're either driving piles into the ground or, you know, whatever the insulation is, it should go pretty quick. The system, once installed, will be in service for 20 years, exporting all the power directly to Eversource, and the expected life is up to 40 years. So that's kind of an overview of the project. We are definitely here to answer any questions, and just some of the next steps that I think, through speaking with Mr. Cole, that I know are the next steps that are going to occur. We've got an appointment later this week on Thursday, I believe, with a couple of the abutting residences to just discuss screening. I'm actually looking forward to standing in their perspective on their property, looking down at where the project is, so we're going to talk through that to make sure that we're going above and beyond taking measures to adequately screen this project. And then, we also... I've heard from Mr. Cole that the board has a request to do a site visit, which we're very open to. We'd love to conduct that as soon as possible before our next meeting with you in a couple weeks, hopefully.
Any questions by any of the board members? Oh, Stephen, do you have anything to add to this?
Sure. As Josh mentioned, we did conduct a technical review of the project, and we did receive a memo in turn from the Fussin' O'Neill peer review team. There was nothing substantive that they contributed to the discussion. In fact, many of the things that were mentioned have either already been addressed, or certainly can easily be addressed. It's a matter of removing certain things or adding things to the plans. There is nonetheless a... There's been a bit of a discussion as to whether or not stormwater management narrative is necessary, gentlemen, that was requested. Did you provide that? Is that what you just handed out?
Yes, and one of the attachments to what I just provided you is a stormwater memo for the site. As Josh mentioned, there's no grading, so there's no earth disturbance there. Effectively, the cover type is changing by, you know, it's no longer going to be agricultural bog, and we're going to allow it to grow. So you'll see on the memo that the curve number actually drops post-construction. So additionally, it's also a managed system, because it's all cranberry bogs, it's actually a managed water system, so we are not proposing, nor do we feel that there's necessary for any stormwater structures.
Mr. Chairman, with your blessings, I'd like to make... Could you send this to me electronically so that we can get this to our peer review team?
Definitely.
Mr. Chairman, at our next meeting, should this be continued, I'd be very glad to present on the findings of our peer review team and the stormwater calculations.
Yeah, that'll have to be looked over by our engineers, too.
Correct, yeah.
How far is the nearest residence from... So, you know, where are...
So, the property owner, Mr. Silva, is located right here on the east side. His residence is 418 feet from the first panel. That's going to be the closest one to this. Mr. and Mrs. Howard are just southeast of him. That's going to be a little bit further, as you can see, and then we've actually called out on Plan C-1.0. We've shown three distances to some of butters to the northwest at 725 feet, 628 feet, and 634 feet.
Those residents are elevated, correct?
They are, correct. There's quite a bit of topography right along here, so they are elevated. So some of the screening discussions that we're going to have are... It's not to screen it from anywhere down in here if additional screening is needed, so we were going to propose something on their property at the higher elevations, if necessary, or however much is necessary.
Mr. Chair, I've been in conversation with at least three of those abutters, and as Josh mentioned, we do have some time scheduled at about 3:30 to meet with those individuals and to see the project site from their perspective, from their yards. That should determine, for the most part, what type of landscaping plan the board should request. Were you to schedule a site visit, that might be something that you would be able to see as well.
All right, if that's any... If there are any more questions, I had any more questions, I'll open this up to anybody out in the audience that came tonight. Is there anybody here that would like to ask a question? If you could come up to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Can I just ask something?
Sure.
What are the tax implications for taking the land out of agriculture? I would assume it has to leave 61A, right? And then, does it go into commercial? What happens to...
Correct. Excuse me, correct. So it'll be the... This portion of the property will be taken out of 61A. The process by which... We don't initiate that until we have all of our permits, then we go visit with the assessor. In addition, we talk about a payment in lieu of taxes, a solar pilot, which I know has been executed in the town many times. So the combination of removing 61A and agreeing on that generally come after the project is squared away, but yes, we'll have to remove it from 61A in that area.
Does the pilot include, like, the five-years-back taxes?
Nope, that's generally a separate item, so we would be liable to cover that.
Okay.
Or responsible to cover that.
Okay.
But I would just add, like we have on several other projects, that Borrego's installed in Carver. Same process.
I just have one quick one. The distance of the working cranberry bog to the solar... What is the distance?
From the surrounding bogs?
From the actual working... Yep.
Yeah, so the dike road, the access roads are roughly...
About 12 feet, yeah.
So, yeah, so they're very close. They all surround one another right nearby.
And they've taken... The grower has taken into consideration how they're going to maintain the active cranberry bogs next to the solar field.
Correct, yep.
Yep, they're going to do ground rigs or something like that, because I know they won't be able to do aerial applications with it so close.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
That would kind of cancel that out, but as long as they know, right?
Yep, so part of the operations and maintenance plan that we'll have on the project will include module washing, so that'll be something, and I think it's a great point that we'll discuss with the landowner as we get to that point. And maybe we schedule module washing for the day after, an aerial drop of fertilizer or whatever, whatever it may be. So we'll have to have some coordination on that, for sure.
Yeah, because I think from the applicator's perspective, they may be a little wary of applying so close to solar panels. You know, you're putting rock salt out there. It's probably, you know, I don't know.
Absolutely, yep. Yeah, and I mean, there was optionality to do a larger system that took up more than one bog, but the landowner's wishes and the interconnection approval from the utility basically allows enough to fit in one of these bogs.
That's good.
And there really are only two bogs that we could have considered that are within the 200-foot setback limit, so we've tried on this one up here, and...
That was a wetland.
That was the wetland bog, exactly. There have been... There has been a project like that in the past in town, so we started with that one, and now we've moved to a slightly smaller one that's located a little bit more centrally. However, it's located much further from the residences, so I think we've lost some size, and we've stayed out of a wetland narrative. I think overall, it represents a more appropriate project.
Thank you.
Did the fire department have to be in... Have they looked at this, or do they have to get involved?
Mr. Chair, through you, the fire department did participate in the TRC, their technical review. My recollection... I was just trying to pull up that memo now. I will certainly include it in the packets for when we reconvene on the 13th. My recollection, though, in reviewing those, were the standard issues of concern, to make certain that it was an all-weather terrain, bit of immiss material, gain access to at least three sides of the project, spacing enough so that they could gain access to the site in case something were to happen during the construction phase, and the turning radius onto the site had to be a certain radius, and I think that you guys achieved that, if I'm recalling.
Correct.
Is there anybody here that has any questions? Little butters. All right, I guess the next thing to do is to schedule a site visit. So if we want to do it, I don't... See, we'll be back, but if we're going to do it before the 13th, which would be our next meeting, could we do it on the 8th or 9th? The 6th is voting. How about the 8th or 9th, which would be a Thursday or Friday of November? Would that be... Would that work for the members here tonight? One of those days?
The 8th sounds good for me.
The 8th, say at 5:00. Would that work for you?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm reminded that we do have daylight savings on the 4th, so it will get darker much sooner than we've been accustomed to, so 5:00 may be pitch black.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, we could even do 4:00, because I... Yeah, I'll be home that day, so we could do it 4:00? Would 3:00 or 4:00?
I'd say probably not later than 3:00 o'clock, if we're going to go from some residences around. If I recollect... My recollection's correct, I think it gets dark at like 4:00 that first couple of weeks afterwards, right?
Okay, yeah.
That's that tough time of year.
Do it next week instead, while... For daylight savings?
Yeah, that's better. I couldn't do 3:00, because I have to get my daughter off the bus at 3:30.
So what day would that be? The 1st or the 2nd?
29th is Monday, and the 2nd is that Friday.
So October 29th or October 30th?
Or the 1st.
Yeah, the 29th is tough with me, but the 1st, the 1st I could do, November 1st.
That works for us. We are going to be on site with the abutters on Thursday. That's super short notice, but I just wanted to repeat that in case that works better for the board.
Oh, you were going to see the abutters on Thursday?
This Thursday.
What time were you going to see the abutters?
3:30, yep.
Oh, okay.
I know it's short notice, but I figured I'd throw it out there.
That would be the 1st.
That's the 25th, Mr. Chair.
Oh, the 25th, oh, okay.
In two days.
Oh, okay, so, but... So if we did it the 1st of November...
And we will have the input from the...
Yeah.
From the abutters, yes.
The abutters and everything, too, so that might be better.
Yep.
Okay, what time? You say... I mean, we could do it at 4:00. Would that be all right?
Closer to 4:15, in case the bus is late.
Oh.
How about 4:30?
4:30?
4:30.
All right.
November 1st at 4:30?
Okay.
Make a motion to have a site visit on November 1st at 4:30. And when should we meet?
Yeah.
What's the meeting location?
We could probably arrange to have vehicles drive down into the bog through the proposed access for the site. There's a gate there that I think I could work with the landowner to have open for us.
Josh, is that the same site... Forgive me, Mr. Chair, through you. Is that the same site that you see the address for 72 Center Street? You just drive down that long driveway? Or is it a different access point?
No, it's a little bit different. So that's the entrance to the Silva, the home residence right here?
Right.
The access is right down here at... Right where Old Center and Center Street intersect.
Oh, okay, great.
Maybe a couple hundred feet just past that.
Mr. Chair, if it pleases the board, I can send out instructions for the rendezvous point for the 1st.
Okay, sounds good.
Site visit at... Location at...
Somewhere at the... Somewhere near the old... The intersection of Old Center and Center Street. All right, so entertain a motion. Do we do a motion? Okay, so...
Second.
So we have a motion and a second?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
I can make this motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to schedule a site visit for the 72 Center Street solar project on November 1st at 4:30 PM.
Have a motion... Yeah, have in the second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll gather your information, see the neighbors, and then we'll be seeing you, and...
Correct.
Then we'll take a look at the area, and, yeah, you might want to even ask the neighbor... The people that we might screen if we could walk on their property to see where you might propose some screening, you know, if they'd allow us to do that.
Sure. Mr. Cole and I, as we see them on Thursday, can definitely bring that up and ask for the okay to do that on the 1st.
Okay, and I don't know... Is that an open area where you could put some marks on the corners of the field so we could see where it is, or how would we know?
Which bog and which area to look at?
Yeah, right.
The bogs are fairly well delineated with the trenches, so it might... You might be able to just visually identify which one it is.
Are you thinking something like a marker in each corner, maybe with like a little...
Yeah, like a bean pole or something with some flagging on it or something, so that we could even kind of... Even if we stood on a neighboring property and, you know, were to look down just to see, you know, what we needed for screening on someone's property or something like that, just so we could visually see that area.
We'll put something up there prior to that date.
Okay, I guess that'll be it, so we'll see you then.
Okay.
Can we...
We have to take a...
...the hearing?
Oh, yeah, and, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Borrego Solar Systems for 72 Center Street to our next meeting on November 13th.
13.
I'll second.
It's going to be November 17th at 7:00.
13.
13, Mr. Chair.
13, 13, said 7:00.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. See you Thursday.
Okay, next is...
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Insofar as agenda item number five is concerned...
Okay, yep.
It's staff's recommendation that we not open that public meeting at as yet. It wasn't properly cited on the agenda. And we will have to do some staff and administrative work in order to be sure that that's prepared for our next meeting on the 13th.
Okay. All right, so we don't have to continue it since we didn't open it up, and it will be on our agenda for the next meeting.
That's correct, sir.
All right, well, then we go to other...
I'm sorry, so what happened on that one?
We just moved, we delayed it.
We didn't even open up the meeting.
Yeah, it's just delayed.
So we're going to just... It's going to be on the next meeting.
Steven was saying that there was... The only reason I'm asking is I know some people came here for that, so I thought we should explain.
No, understood. So the advertisement and the posting was made for special permit and site plan review. It should also have been indicating that it was a subdivision as well.
Oh, okay. All right. So that will be... That particular application will be on our next meeting on the 13th, November 13th, for anybody here that came for that. So we'll go on to other business. Planning board member notes. Anybody have anything that they'd like to say? Planning director notes.
Mr. Chair, we have two meetings that are typically scheduled each month, the 2nd and 4th Tuesday. Looking ahead to our November calendar, it does appear that our second scheduled meeting would be the 27th. 13th and 27th. That seems to be fine insofar as holidays are concerned. Looking ahead, however, to the December schedule, our meetings are scheduled for December 11th and December 25th. That seems to conflict with a holiday.
11?
A day which shall live in infamy, right? So that the applicants or future applicants, the staff as well as the board has some predictability. Would like the board to determine whether we'll meet only on the 11th in December or if we might schedule a special hearing. And insofar as a special is concerned, we can certainly wait to see the volume of work we have before us by the 11th and in so doing, then determine whether a special is necessary.
I think that's probably what we'll have to do, because it seems like we do have a lot... Every meeting that we have now, a lot more than we used to have, that's for sure. And a lot of big projects coming up. So it could be that we may have to reschedule that 25th meeting to another day. But we'll see by the 11th, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have the minutes of October 9, 2018.
I don't see them.
Are they not in your packets?
Do we have the minutes of October 9?
Should be at the back of the packets.
See, they are... Oh, that's right, and they weren't on the internet. We could... We could table these to the next meeting, too, if you...
Mr. Chair, there might actually be a proper motion as well, considering at least two of the members who were there at that meeting are not here tonight. We can still ratify those minutes. But if they're not in your packets, I can circulate them in the interim period so that you will have a chance to review them before the next meeting on the 13th.
Right, that would be good. That'd be a good idea.
Okay.
So let's just table that to our next meeting. And next thing is our next meeting date will be November 13. Okay, have a motion for... Entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you and good night, everyone.